I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. The first item on our agenda this evening is a special permit for with site plan approval for modification, public hearing. Mike Patterson, Next Grid for 1073 Main Street?
I get to read the public hearing.
Right.
I'll do it.
You are up.
Okay. In accordance with the provisions of Chapter 40A, Section 11 of Massachusetts General Laws, planning board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, October 7th, 2025, at 7:30 PM in the Veterans Memorial Building, Room 229, 900 Main Street, Millis, on the application of Michael Patterson, Millis Solar LLC, Next Grid, 68 Harrison Ave, Suite 605, PMB 73069, Boston, Mass. 02111, requesting modification amendment to special permit site plan approval under Section 21, large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installations, and 13.C of the zoning bylaws of the Town of Millis for amendments to update the carport-mounted solar array and modify existing drain and pipe location for property located at 1073 Main Street, Millis, Mass., Map 22, Lot 1, property owned by A.C. Millis LLC. A copy of the application and site plan is on file in the office of the town clerk and on the planning board's webpage. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the application should appear at the time and place designated. Richard Nichols, Chair.
Thank you. Okay, Benji, if you'd like to introduce yourself for the record, and you'll have the floor.
Does he have to move that over there? I'm sorry.
Does the easel have to be pointed for the camera? Like, moved?
He should be able to get it straight.
Okay.
Can you see it?
Yeah. Oh, we can't. I'm just waiting to see if the camera picks it up.
Good evening. Once again, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Once again, my name is Benji Bora with CSG Developers, contractor of the solar project. Mike Patterson from Next Grid, the developer of this project, will not be available for tonight's meeting because he's sick. So I will be stepping in to present a request to the planning board to approve the modification amendment to the special permit. I have here the revised plans for your approval, and I believe that Beta's last report stated that all their comments had been addressed, resolved. I'm hoping that the planning board can close the public hearing and vote on the amendment with application, the special permit, which includes approval to divert the stormwater drainage, approval for the spread footing foundation, most importantly, request to lift the work stop order and resume work as soon as possible. Can do it next day, next week. We'll really appreciate it. And also, I want to inform this board that the fence will be installed next week. Thank you again for your patience, guidance, and attention to this project.
Thank you. Yes, we have the most recent letter from Beta dated September 22nd that you all have. Does indicate that all of the issues have been resolved to Beta's satisfaction. Does anyone on the board have any questions?
I just have a quick comment. I just want to let you know that you've held yourself professionally, you and Michael, through this process. It's not an easy task when you found out, you know, whatever happened, happened, and you have held yourself very professionally through this process, and I thank you for that.
Yes, very welcome, and I really appreciate your tolerance and your patience as well. We really appreciate that.
Are there any questions or comments from the audience? No? Okay. Then...
Just ask one question.
Of course.
Is there a set of plans to leave with us?
Yes. I had like two copies.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay. So if there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Everybody.
Motion has been made to close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. So, is there any discussion with regards to the special permit?
So if we approve this, would the building commissioner get that tomorrow? Would he be notified?
I can certainly email Bob Fogarty and let him know that they followed the steps of the work order, and the decision will be coming, so that he should be able to do that. Yeah. Okay.
Just a quick question, because we're really looking forward to resume the work. When do we think can we start working?
Go back? That's what I just asked.
Yeah, that was what we just asked. We will... We're going to take the vote on the special permit. I'm assuming it will pass. Camille will notify the building commissioner tomorrow morning. It's his call when it starts, but I... We think it would be fairly...
If I can just...
Yes.
His work order stated that you had to file the application with the planning board, so if the hearing's closed and the planning board votes and it gets approved, I can email Bob Fogarty to let him know that the steps have been followed, and I would assume at that point, he should be able to lift the order pending the decision. I mean, I don't think that would be... But I will let him know first thing in the morning.
Thank you very much.
So if there's no other questions or comments...
I move we approve the modifications to the special permit.
Great. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to approve the special permit for with site plan approval for 1073 Main Street, Next Grid solar installation. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Motion carries. We will let Bob know that in the morning.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Benji, I will prepare the decision and file that with the town clerk and send you an electronic copy when that's done. And if you wouldn't mind just leaving the copies of the plans, that would be great. You can take your board with you. I just need the plan set. Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the... Up we are. Only three minutes behind schedule. That's wonderful. Special permit for with site plan approval modification, public hearing for 121 Norfolk Road Cell Tower, Wireless Edge, James Fitzgerald. Want to read that? Thank you.
In accordance with the provisions of Chapter 40A, Section 11 of the Massachusetts General Laws, the planning board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, October 7th, 2025, at 7:35 PM in the Veterans Memorial Building, Room 229, 900 Main Street, Millis, on the application of Wireless Edge, 38 West Market Street, Linebacke, New York, 12572, requesting a modification amendment to special permit for site plan approval under Section 13C and N of the zoning bylaws of the Town of Millis for grading changes within the interior of the compound of the personal wireless communications facility to be constructed at 121 Norfolk Road, Map 39, Parcel 43, Millis, Mass. Copy of the application and site plan is on file in the office of the town clerk and on the planning board's webpage. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the application should appear at the time and place designated. Richard Nichols, Chair.
Thank you, Ellen. Hi.
Hi. Thank you all. My name is...
Introduce yourselves for the people at home?
Sure. Thank you. My name is James Fitzgerald. I'm with Chapel Engineering. I'm presenting Wireless Edge Communications here on the special permit application that we're seeking an amendment to. Appreciate everyone being here tonight. I have, I guess, what's the best way to... So, we had come before the board and been approved previously via special permit for a communications facility on a town-owned property in parcel. The purpose of the structure is for commercial communications, but also public safety. And it was a project done jointly with the town. And we've come back for an amendment, I guess to explain the thesis to this. We had been approved, we were moving into construction, and part of the... The construction is a caisson foundation. The caisson foundation is a drilled shaft. Bedrock on this property is approximately 34 feet below grade. And once the drillers had looked at the facility, they thought that the slope in the interior of the compound was too challenging and unsafe for the equipment. So we were tasked with trying to develop a flatter location within the center of the compound to make the construction safer and ultimately make it for a better site. I have the... And we've been working with GCD, GCG, on the elements of the stormwater management plan that have changed, because ultimately, that's... We flattened out the middle of the compound, and it required us to change some of the contours, and the town's consultant, that's their expertise. I have a set of the plans that I can hand out. It's open to...
Thank you.
Open to the subject page. See if I have enough?
Thanks.
All right.
We can share.
Okay. Keep it pure. Good thing Mike isn't here. And actually, for the...
Save paper.
Got to work. Let me try and do it like this, maybe. So, I'll get my bearings, get them up a side down here. So, all right.
Here, I've seen this. Sir?
Sir, you can grab a preset. Oh, thank you. The original site involved an access road coming up into the compound. Originally, the compound was fully squared off, and we had developed two storage facilities for the stormwater.
Actually, excuse me, Mr. Fitzgerald. If I can just bother you to move like back...
Stand here?
Yes, because, one, they can't hear you without the mic, and, two, by bringing it over there, the camera isn't able to pick it up for anyone who's at home.
Oh, I... This'll work.
Yeah, that was...
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
You just leave them there.
Yeah. Let me just leave those there.
The majority of the design is unchanged. What has changed is the... There was a... This was an existing swale along one side. We've added an additional swale to collect any stormwater that comes... Any stormwater that would come into the facility. So we have swale going around into a drop inlet structure and then releasing out into the existing, or the previously proposed swale. We feel like we've done... We've worked with GCG and gone and tried to address all of their comments. We feel the nature of the site is basically the same. The site was a challenged... Challenged site for grades to begin with. This is a much better design of the facility. The utility area is better. It's... There's better access for drilling and... Or for excavating and installing any of the other materials. We feel that this design is much safer and still holds true to the stormwater management plan and how we were trying to mitigate stormwater issues. And we're just looking forward, hopefully, coming to a resolution with the design. We received comments earlier today from GCG. We've adapted those into these plans. These are freshly revised, and we're hoping to have the board see this and possibly make a contingent approval on GCG having their final blessings on our approach and plan. So we're hoping if there's a possibility to... We're happy to bring this before and have the public have an opportunity to communicate or respond or become involved in the process. But in the essence of everyone's time, we would like to try and save the board the time and move the project along.
So we have had conversations with GCG, and we know that you have been going back and forth. We don't give... We don't give approvals like that, knowing that our consultant has not fully reviewed it.
Sure.
Knowing that there is... That time is ticking on this and that the town has as much influence and interest in getting this started, obviously, as you do. The board has discussed holding a special meeting, because our next meeting isn't until November 18th. Holding a meeting later this month. The only thing is, is that Camille will need a full week. You need a week, right? So if we were to hold a meeting on the 21st, you have to have everything by the 14th. Correct?
It's not a public hearing that needs to be posted. It's just the meeting. So I can post the meeting, you know, if you set the date, I can post the meeting anytime. It has to be at least 48 hours before the meeting, but I can post a meeting anytime. The more concern is for GCG to have time to review, and then they like to prepare a comment letter, you know, saying that all of their comments have been addressed satisfactorily, and they're comfortable with the plan. So it's basically giving them enough time to review and do their letter, their final letter.
Sure.
So before we go any further on that, I'm going to open the hearing to the board. Any comments or questions?
No, I think it's a great idea that we, you know, if... And amendable. I mean, the 21st is great for me, and...
Yeah, we appreciate that.
So that would be, you would just have to have everything over to... Your final plans over to GCG with enough time for them to review it, and then we don't vote until... We wouldn't... We wouldn't vote on it until we knew that GCG says everything has been addressed.
Understood, yeah.
And as Camille just said, she needs to have a couple days' notice so that... So that she can post the meeting. So if it was coming up to, like, that Friday before, and it was looking like it wasn't going to come together, we wouldn't... We wouldn't have... We wouldn't hold the meeting on the 21st.
Of course, yeah.
But if there's... If it is possible, and I guess that kind of falls into your hands, how long it'll take you to get all of that stuff to GCG, for them to review it and get a report to us?
Right. I think we can work with the time schedule that you've explained. GCG has been great to work with.
I know you guys have been back and forth all day today, so...
Yeah. About the last two weeks, but specifically today, yes. We're very appreciative of their help and their expertise, and ultimately, I think it really does make for a better site. And I think the fire department would be happy with that, and the police department as well. So...
I'd be more happy, because the equipment's packed in my garage, and I'm afraid a dump truck's going to back into it any day now.
All right. We'll try and get you a site built real quick.
Any...
I just had a question on the plan.
Yep.
For concrete reinforcing steel notes on number two, you have all concrete shall have a minimum comprehensive strength of 3,000 PSI 28 days, unless otherwise noted, a higher strength, 4,000 PSI may be used. Usually, it's 4,000 PSI on a...
Oh.
You know...
Yeah.
Is there a reason why you have 3,000 PSI?
That... Yeah. The general notes is for general-purpose concrete around the job site.
It should be all 4,000 PSI.
Agreed, agreed. The... What will supersede that, as are general notes, the concrete for the actual tower itself is specified in the foundation design from the engineers. So the fact that we include a minimum concrete compressive stress or capacity is for general-purpose concrete around the site. The tower foundation itself is 4,000.
I understand that.
Straight up.
General purpose should be 4,000 around as well.
I believe it's 3,500, but I have no problem with making that 4,000.
It would be...
I agree. The pour... The water-to-cement ratio in 4,000 PSI concrete is all but impervious, and it's worth...
Can we have that note just to change, to show that 4,000 be the minimum, not 3?
Yeah. Where did you see it in?
It's on concrete...
Site work number two? Or general notes number two?
GN-1, Page GN-1. Concrete reinforcing steel notes.
Oh, yeah. Yep, got it.
Number two.
Yep.
If we can just scratch the 3,000 and just make mandated 4,000 now.
We've already... We already changed it.
Oh, okay.
Is it on that one? Or is it the one you brought?
No, it's the one you just handed out. Hey, come here and show you.
Because mine says 4,000.
Yeah, I was going to say, mine did too.
It says all concrete should have 3,000 PSI 28 days.
Oh.
Oh, higher strength is... Oh, I got you.
Yeah. Just scratch the 3,000 and make it 4,000?
We'll make them both 4,000.
It's just, it can be construed to say, well, it says on the plan 3,000, you know, somebody could argue that.
Yeah, agreed. Okay.
To save some money, so we don't want that to happen.
Thanks, Mike. Anyone else have any questions or comments? Okay, I'll open it up to the audience. Does anyone... You can come right up to the desk, sir, if you'd like. Just introduce yourself.
Hi, George Deely, 120 Norfolk Road, and a butter directly across the street, so I'm interested in the site design. I know where it was marked out originally. Could you just describe what the amendment would be, how the site would change? Go further up the hill.
Actually, just have to go over to the mic to answer, please.
Yeah. Yeah, the site has not changed in location, in size. It's all... The compound has gotten smaller. The tower is in the exact same spot. The road is in the same spot. The existing, or the proposed erosion control, we have, what, two ponds that will fill up as storms come. None of that has changed. So originally, we thought, you know, the... We weren't sure. The nature of the changes were so minimal, we didn't even know if we would need to come for an amendment, but...
Very good. So the orange stakes or the stakes or the orange ribbons are the same location?
Yep.
Okay. And the other question is...
Actually, if you can just go to the mic, just so, you know, our huge audience at home can...
Which would have been me if I weren't here, right? The other question is, so this is a 150-foot tower, right? It was pretty high. Any consideration to naturalizing it a little bit, to maybe make it look like a tree? That's a very scenic area with the big field and the woods there. Is that a possibility or something that's been considered?
I believe we've...
That was discussed earlier.
That was discussed earlier about, isn't the... Isn't the center of the tower going to be... Wasn't it brown?
Yeah. There... We've been doing, we found, the developer's been doing these for the last 20 years, and we've tried...
Jim, if you can just turn that mic around. Sorry, because in a few seconds, we're going to have somebody at the other one waving.
Yep. We've tried a lot of different ways of hiding and making holes and towers disappear. We've tried, you know, faux trees and different colors. We painted them blue. We've painted, you know, the galvanized gray, obviously is standard. And Wireless Edge, they've come up with this Turkish coffee, which is a brown, kind of like... It looks like a pine tree from far away. And I wasn't a big... I wasn't sold on this, but after seeing a bunch in the field, it's the earth tone of brown, it subdues into the background, the shadows kind of disappear into it. All things considered, I think it's... They've done what they could to make it look as minimalist as possible.
Okay, great. Glad to hear this being considered and looking forward to getting faster data network speeds, which I assume this is all about, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All of us that live in that area.
Yes.
Exactly. Yeah.
Yes, you have several quarters on this board that are very ages for this. Are there any other comments, questions from the audience? Okay.
I move we close the...
No. No, we're continuing it.
The public comments section?
No, we don't have to close it. We just have to continue the public hearing until October 21st.
So moved.
Okay. Do I have a second?
It's 7:00 PM.
It's 7:30 PM?
Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So we will... Assuming that you guys can get everything done to GCG and...
Yep. We'll get with Mike and Tony and...
We will be... We will see you back in two weeks.
Great. Thank you.
Tony's a tough...
He is, but he's been great.
He's great. He's very smart. He's a...
Thank you.
Do you want these back?
My town engineer.
Do you want these back?
You guys can hang on to them.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Nice to see you. Take care.
Okay. Moving on.
And there's our crowd.
Proposed zoning map amendments, public hearing for amendment to comply with the updated 2025 FEMA maps.
The Town of Millis Planning Board will hold a public hearing pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 5, on Tuesday, October 7th, 2025, at the Veterans Memorial Building, Room 229, 900 Main Street, Millis, Mass. at 7:45 PM. The purpose of the public hearing is to provide interested parties with an opportunity to comment on proposed changes to the Millis zoning bylaws, Section 3C, Establishment of Zoning District zoning map. The proposed amendments include to see if the town will vote to amend the Town of Millis zoning bylaw, Section 3C, Establishment of Zoning District, in order to amend the Town of Millis zoning map to be in compliance with the updated 2025 FEMA flood insurance rate maps, and to amend the Millis zoning map accordingly or to take any other action related thereto. The complete text of these proposed amendments to the zoning bylaws is on file at the office of the town clerk, Veterans Memorial Building, 900 Main Street, Millis, and are available for inspection during regular business hours and on the planning board's webpage. These articles may not be numbered, as though they will ultimately appear in the warrant at town meeting. Richard Nichols, Chair.
All righty. So this, what we have is the draft of the latest version of the zoning map. And this includes the... These updated FEMA changes, which I understand the town is going to try to appeal. But in the meantime, we have to accept them, change the map, and then hopefully, if the appeal goes through, we will change the map back. Any comments or questions?
It just shows that how wet Millis really is, doesn't it?
Yes. Yes.
Not this year.
Hopefully, I've got some 12-foot bushes that are starting to get brown on the inside.
I think it's just self-explanatory, like you just explained it, doesn't it?
Yeah. Okay. I guess I have to officially ask if there are any questions from the audience? Nope? Okay. Then if there are no questions or comments, a move to close the public hearing?
Second?
Second.
Nope.
Okay. All those in favor of closing the public hearing? Say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay.
Can you just... One more thing?
Yep.
Make a motion to recommend this as a warrant article at town meeting.
Okay. So I will recommend to... I will make the motion to recommend this as a warrant article to the select board at town meeting.
Just at town meeting.
Oh, just at town meeting, not to select board. Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay.
Sorry, who seconded that?
Ellen.
Ellen.
All righty. We are moving along. Okay, next item, to vote on the special permit application for 36 Meadow Cartway Proposed Accessory Dwelling Unit. Site plan was approved on September 9th, 2025.
You want to continue to the next?
Um, do we, okay, so this isn't a public hearing?
Right.
We just...
It's just a joint voting vote.
Okay. So Mike has to recuse himself?
Yeah.
Um, you don't have to leave the table. I'll give you...
I recommend we go to the next meeting, so we can wait, put it on the next planning board meeting, continue. So, Madam Chair, I'll make a recommendation that we postpone and, to our next meeting on the 21st?
Okay, second? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, that has been...
Abstained. Good thing you did it.
Okay. Um, then, yeah. Okay, the next item on the agenda. We, the zoning bylaw review committee has requested that our current building commissioner, Bob Fogarty, be appointed as a new member to that committee. I've spoken to Bob, and he is happy to join that committee, so we just need to vote to appoint him as another member. So I make a motion that the planning board appoint Robert Fogarty, building commissioner, to the zoning bylaw review subcommittee.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, great, so passes. Next item is the minutes from September 9th. Has everybody read them?
I did.
They are spot on as usual. Thank you, Camille. So I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from September 9th, 2025.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. So our next meeting, well, we will have a short meeting on October 21st, which will just have the 121 Norfolk Road Cell Tower and the 36 Meadow Cartway ADU. If something comes in, would it be added, added to that?
We don't have to do it short, so just have a regular meeting. I mean, if an application or anything were to be filed, it would have to wait till November anyways, these items.
All righty. So our next scheduled meetings are October 21st, November 18th, and would you like us to set the December meeting?
Do you want to wait till Rich comes?
Oh, okay.
Into October?
Okay. All righty. And just a reminder that Fall Town Meeting is Monday, November 10th. Anybody else have anything they would like to add?
Just that we both went to, we went to the Capitol Planning Committee, and I went to the Finance Committee for our software upgrade.
Oh, that's right.
And I think they were both received well, by both, and we actually, we went to the Select Board also. And I, all three committees, I believe, you know, thinks it's, think it's a good idea, so hopefully...
There's still question as to whether the Capitol Planning...
Right.
But they've been, they've been notified.
It's a dead problem, but they were notified.
So they've, we've explained it to them, they're in favor. FinCom seemed to be in favor, so I know Select Board is in favor, so it looks like that will be a warrant. So hopefully, we can get the zoning bylaws digitized, make Camille's life a lot easier, make anybody who's using them's life a lot easier.
Make this thing a lot easier.
Yeah.
More of this.
Yes. Anything else? Oh, okay. I'll make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Good night.
I have things to sign, so...
Do you want to save any of these for the 21st?
It's still on.
I'm sorry.
Save any of these for the 21st?
I found a mistake.
Uh, you can save the 36...